Have a plan. And it created a bunch of confusion and it did not serve or meet the needs of the community for sure. We were behind the, behind the curve and certainly it wasn't our best. So I'd like to be proactive and have a discussion about how we do meet the needs of the community and make sure that we're working together with our cities to ensure that we're taking care of our people. So that, that's why this workshop was important to me. When this happened, the last cold event, there was a ton of phone calls between myself, Ted, Gold Beach City Council, Brookings City Council, Brookings City Manager, and we need to address these things now so that we have a clear and concise plan. And thank you for being here today, Anthony. Once again, appreciate it. I wish we had City of Brookings here, but we'll figure it out. We did get their policy and procedures regarding what they do with warming centers, so that will be helpful. Before we have any dialogue or discussion on this, I, I just want to remind everybody the jurisdictional issues that come with this. So if the city of Gold Beach has a warming center, or the city of Brookings does, the county doesn't play a role in that. And if we identify a need for one in Harbor or in another part of the county, then certainly we would take the lead on that. But that was really the source of a lot of confusion about, because I was, I was getting calls saying, "Why aren't you doing anything? What are you going to do? Where are you going to put the shelter? We need to have it at the fairgrounds. We need to have it at the high school." And people didn't understand that that's in the city of Gold Beach. And the county's certainly not going to tell Gold Beach what to do. But we are interested in working with you, so I'd like to have that conversation and then also get the community's input about how best we can proceed.
There we go. Carl, come on up.
Caro. I was at the warming shelter here in Gold Beach. I was there the day we set it up. I was there two out of every three shifts until it was closed. There were no issues. There were absolutely no issues. People came in. They were assigned a space. Before we opened up, Mr. Grumman and I laid out using painter's tape, and I just found copies of these areas, one for men and a separate area for women. We had a third area for family. Everyone had a, an assigned space that we viewed large enough. In the women's area, we had more total area, so we were able to put aisles in between the assigned places. Everyone had direct access to a bathroom facility. Everyone had access to a qualified fire emergency exit. A truck arrived, thank God, from California with blankets, pillows, food, medicines. And we were able, as the photos show you, to set up for each assigned space, two blankets and a pillow. And so when a guest came in, he or she were assigned a space. If they were there more than one night, they kept that space. So the second night when they came, they had the same space. So they were able to leave in that space their personal belongings that they needed to be there. As I say, there was no issue. There were people, we locked the doors at ten, we opened at six and people left. Before ten o'clock at night, people came in who did not wish to stay there, but had a place to sleep and needed maybe blankets, maybe pillow and maybe food, and they were provided them. There was no issue. Absolutely no issue at all. The only issue was that the facility asked that it not be, no, people not be notified that we were there. So we didn't serve everyone because we couldn't tell people. Most of the volunteers when I was there, and as I say, I was there at least two thirds, if not more, of the time, were other people who had experienced homelessness and now had a place to sleep. And they were giving back. We had people, one person came in who works for one of our major manufacturers to thank us because two years ago he had been homeless. And now he had a job. People helped him. Mike coming here, and you've not seen me here for a long time, I just got tired of the contentiousness. I'm too old for that. Because I was concerned with the wording of these two ordinances you're looking at. They seem to talk about prohibiting people being assigned a, assigned spot. Well, that's what we did. And they seem to be concerned about providing people the means of laying down and sleeping. And that's what we did. And I, I don't understand why it's any business of anyone's if we have a warming shelter and we can provide assigned spaces and the means of people to lay down. And we did this during COVID. So a lot of those blankets went to the transfer station immediately afterwards.
Carl, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How, about how many people were there each day?
Well, they were, you know, it, you know, my memory, my memory is not the best these days. At least five to six men and several women. And there were people who came in and stayed the night and took a space, but spent most of the evening sitting at a table, talking with other people.
Are you talk, are you talking about the, the, the Brookings location or the Gold Beach?
Gold Beach.
Okay.
Where was it?
It was at the fairgrounds.
Because I heard a different count on the numbers, and that's what I'm trying to verify.
From Gold Beach?
Yeah, I've, I've heard the numbers were lower than that. I've heard there was one or two people there, but I, I.
I don't remember there ever being only one or two people.
Maybe sleeping.
Yeah, and that, that's why I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to get a.
There were more than one or two people sleeping.
Beth, was that each day? Okay.
Now, my understanding is that this isn't necessarily about how it was operated.
Right, no.
This is about how it was initiated. So the initiation of this is where things got chaotic.
Right.
Once it was up and running, I don't think there was any problems with it up and running. It was, it was the process in which we got one going. And so there was a lot of back and forth. There was a lot of, whose, 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 whose ball is it? And I, and I think that that's what we're trying to solve today.
Well, then, the, but your ordinance, the two ordinances you're looking at contain provisions that dictate how the warming shelter is laid out. And I'm only a recovering lawyer. I haven't practiced for a few years. But I'm concerned that the choice of words could have someone come in to this facility and say, "Oh, you've assigned a space and you're providing bedding. You're closed down."
Oh.
That's my concern. I think.
Is that a real thing?
Well. Well. May, maybe redirecting this right now would be a, maybe, a, a, a better approach. So that shelter was in the city of Gold Beach?
Right.
Okay, so Anthony, maybe you can help us. Do you, does the city of Gold Beach have a policy in place? Or do you have anything in place surrounding the rules, the regulations, the? Because that's in, that's not in the county's jurisdiction. It's in Gold Beach's jurisdiction.
Well, the, the.
So this.
The fire department and the building department both inspected it and passed it.
Right, but you're talking about our ordinance.
I, right.
That's, the municipality is Gold Beach.
Well, why do you need an ordinance that covers Gold Beach?
Because we're reviewing a couple of ordinances.
Because if we were to open one in Harbor, we, we don't have anything established. If we were to open one in the unincorporated area, that's what I think we're really trying to work through.
And I ask that you specific limit, like you have on the so-called time, place and manner regulations you belatedly adopted, that you make it clear that what you're doing applies only in the unincorporated area and that us in Gold Beach take care of Gold Beach, that Brookings take care of Brookings, Port Orford take care of.
We don't have jurisdiction. Carl, we don't, we don't need to do that because that's already exists. That's how government's laid out. Our, our concern, the reason that we're having this is because when shelters were being set up, all of a sudden, I started receiving a whole bunch of calls from a bunch of people that weren't the city of Gold Beach or the city of Brookings or anybody. I, random people from, from other NGOs and so forth that were, that were demanding that, that we provide resources to the city of Gold Beach and others. And I, I didn't, I didn't understand.
Demanding that we open one in Gold Beach.
The simple answer is this doesn't govern Gold Beach. Call Gold Beach.
Right, that's.
I tried, I tried that answer.
Do any more than that.
That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to communicate, right?
Then, then they didn't like talking to me, so they called every one of my commissioners.
I'm sorry, that's part of you. I hear, every time I watch one of your meetings online, I hear how you want to hear from your people because you speak for the people of the county. And now you're complaining that people in the county talked.
Not at all. We're not, not complaining about that at all.
Actually, actually, these people were all from Crescent City.
Oh, California.
And I, I did have a question. So when you said you got a truckload of supplies from California, who'd it come from?
Okay.
Okay, all right, good. Because that, that raised my, because I, I definitely wanted that answer because it might have been those same people that were calling me all weekend.
Again, I don't think Gold Beach needs your help.
We're not trying to help them, Carl.
You, you, well, then make it clear that.
Carl, I thought you didn't want to be contentious.
Make it clear.
So, so we got requests from some of the nonprofits to open a center in Gold Beach, and there was some confusion from the nonprofits, which I'd hope, I appreciate Beth being here, but I'd hope more would come so we could have that conversation and explain those jurisdictional boundaries and communicate with Gold Beach so that if there is a way we can help them, maybe we can. I don't know. That's why we're here.
Clarify the ordinance.
Thank you.
Doesn't apply to the cities and let the cities take care of themselves.
There was a lot of back and forth because somebody was trying to declare an emergency.
Well, they were.
Whether it should be the city itself or it should be the county or the.
And that was, and that, and that was another big issue was, was having the county declare a state of emergency. And then there, I mean, the, some of the demands were pretty incredible, which was you need to declare a state of emergency and order Gold Beach to open the shelter. So we're not going to do that.
No, we don't have anything against opening a shelter.
Right, no.
Unless we ask you to.
So, so and I, and I, and I think that's what's, again, that's what's really important to recognize. There was also some confusion about the location, right? Because the location is, I think we own the county building, the county, the buildings are the county's. The location is, is the fare boards, but it's in the city. So then whose jurisdiction is all that, right?
More complicated.
Right? So whose jurisdiction is all, all that? And, and I think that was creating some of the confusion as well. But the bottom line is the location is in the city of Gold Beach. And I think that's the important factor to recognize here. Would you agree, Anthony? Okay.
But at the same time, if, if, you know, the whole issue of, of, you know, the whole emergency declaration thing, as I recall, people were saying if we, if we declared an, an emergency, we would be able to access resources from outside the state. And so we wanted to see if, I mean, is that a role that we can play better than, than, I just want to, it, it, it's not going to work when you call, when you're a random third party and you call from California on Friday night and say, "You need to do this."
Right.
So that's why we want to find out where we can, how we can, you know, if we can act to make everything, you know, smooth and, and get these things open when they need to be, that's great.
Right, and, and in terms of declaring an emergency, what are those parameters, right?
Right.
And, and, and so having a conversation about what those might be and what those might look like so that we know that if you make a request, if the city of Gold Beach says, "Hey, we're urging you to declare a state of emergency for these reasons," then we've already discussed what those parameters are and we can act more efficiently as a government.
We're, we're not looking at an ordinance. We're looking at a policy.
A policy, correct. A policy. And, and then the other question that I have for you, Ted, is so if we own the buildings on the fairground property, then what is our liability relationship there? And then are we involved in that decision-making process? And what is the degree of that? And I think those things need to be discussed as well.
Well, it would, that would be, I would love to discuss that in a normal situation, but the whole relationship between the county and the fair is, that's overseen by, by, A, these weird Oregon statutes that give, that make this really strange relationship that, that no, no normal person would ever agree to. But that's, that's what exists. And then we also have an underlying agreement, master agreement between the county and, and the fair. As far as I'm concerned, I, I read that and I see that we, we own the buildings, but we, but we have no, we have no management or oversight of those. We, they're, the fair is in charge of maintenance and so forth. That's all their deal. And, and that was another weird thing because we were looking for, you know, part of the problem was they were looking for, to have things inspected and so forth so they could occupy it.
Right.
And the inspector's actually a county employee working for the city. And then, then it just got confusing because then they're like, "Well, what are we doing here?" But yeah, that would be, the other thing that I, as I recall, we were also talking about alternate locations as well. There was the school, and they couldn't do that because they don't have emergency generators. I, I, I can't remember.
It might have been a church. I can't remember.
But it, to me, it sounds like how the communication could have gone would have been, you know, Anthony saying, "Okay, we need a shelter. We need a warming shelter."
Right.
"We're, it, it's coming up this weekend." So he says, "Let's look at the fairgrounds." He calls the fairgrounds. Fairgrounds says, "Hey, can we have it in the event center?" Now, at that point, you know, they say, "Okay, sure." And then.
We're not involved at all.
And then notify the county that they're going to be using an alternate purpose use for the event center for a warming shelter through the weekend. And then I think that whole communication loop closes.
So, and Beth, maybe you can answer this question. There's a cost associated with that. Obviously, you're renting the, you're renting the facility. Who paid for that? Or how, how was that worked in?
Community action paid $600 a day for sure.
Okay.
To use, to use the building.
And do you know, so was that contract in with the, how's the liability of all that work?
Yes.
Okay, so the, so the insurance was covered by the fair?
No, insurance was covered by Orca.
Orca carried a sort of insurance for the building. I was in those meetings, cluster, you know, but, for days.
Right.
It was horrible. So my suggestion would be I do have a risk management, emergency management background. I would say that a multi-agency coordination would be the way to go. You're already having that conversation now.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you don't exchange business cards in the middle of a cluster. You do it on a blue sky day like today, and that's what we're here to do, is to have this conversation. So I'm, I'm glad we're here. Thanks for having the workshop. And, and I hope that we don't ever have another crazy bunch of Zoom meetings like that again in, in the midst of trying to respond to community needs. But I think you're planning now, and this is when we're starting to plan also. We're planning for out of the cold. We're planning for, for pit count, for, for pit count 24. This is when we start doing those things, so this is good timing. But I would seriously, I mean, look at your incident command system, your ICS, and look at that structure and use that as a template for how you're, what your org chart looks like, who's in charge, who's responsible for calling it, and, and who's going to talk to the city and who's going to, you know, Gold Beach and Brookings and organize all that, but.
We have that in place and, and I'm very familiar with it. But again, it's.
We didn't, Beth.
It's in.
It didn't.
In our jurisdiction.
Right.
But there was awful lot of confusion. Not, not every layperson or even a nonprofit director understands the complicated relationship between the county and the city of Fairgrounds.
There were, yeah, the people from NGOs were calling OEM because I ended up on the, I ended up on the phone on like Saturday afternoon with a representative from OEM talking about the emergency declaration.
We were just trying to get somebody with authority to make a decision that we're, yes, we're going to move forward on this. And who's going to be the financially responsible party, who's going to cover the insurance? Who's going to, who's going to run it? Who's going to do? And I'm not in the business of running shelters. It's not really what we're in. It's not what our interest is in this, but we'll do it if that's what needs to be done to protect the community. But, and it worked out well. I think we had a successful, I'm not sure what happened down in Brookings. I don't know what was observed, but we had a tight ship.
So we didn't have any issues in Brookings other than the city manager called me to tell me that they were going to open a shelter there, make me aware of it. And we did have a conversation about declaring an emergency if needed, but they didn't feel that it was, it, it met the needs of that at that time.
And there was a lot of confusion around that point, too. We don't need one.
Yeah.
We didn't need one to stand up in a, in, out of the cold or winter warming shelter. And there was a lot of confusion there. People thought that we did, and turns out we don't.
I think I understand a lot of that better now, too.
It's just that, just, you know, it's that, I guess from our perspective is we want to know that you're thinking about it. We want to know that you're planning for it and we want to be notified. What are your trigger points? What says we're opening a warming center? What is your policy? Is it 32 degrees below sustained with winds and rain? And I mean, what are we talking about? And once you have all those nuances figured out, how are you going to share that with those of us that work with the people and?
And also, like, for example, you know, on, on the topic of blankets and so forth. So how do you determine when you reach out to us to ask for additional resources, too? I mean, if it, if it, it does get bigger, do you do that? In a normal emergency, that's what you'd do, I would think. I mean, you, you, you know, you'd reach out to the surrounding municipalities or, or, or government jurisdictions for additional resources if it was a fire or something like that.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you know or have access to any of the other counties or governments that have a set of kind of.
Parameters?
Parameters on when that's initiated, yes.
Coos Bay's got a great, I think Coos Bay, if you could adopt what the city of Coos Bay is doing, because that's the other piece I want to share here as I think that as we uniformly implement these types of things within our region, and we have less of that, "Oh, well, they let me do this over here, but they won't let me do that over there," and moving around. And so I, I've always had this vision that we are planning regionally here and have to address these issues so that we're not forcing in, ingress egress.
So in the package is Coos Bay's policy and the city of Brookings' policy looks pretty consistent with that as well. So Anthony, you guys don't have a policy now? Are you looking to implement one? Or what's, what, what's your forward thinking on this?
Well, I can't speak for the council, so I don't know what they're.
Sure.
But we, we're happy to help where we can. We don't, like how Carl was saying earlier, we, let us know what we can do and we'll help you get there. But we didn't, we don't have a policy in place to for it to affect, and I don't know if we really need to. I mean, if somebody comes and an organization, an organization says, "Okay, this weather's coming. Can we do this?" And we say, "Yep, get your space. You're good."
Right.
Communicate with our PD, let them know, and communicate with our fire department so they can do a walkthrough and we're, we're good. Somebody's got to be.
The problem with that, the problem with that is that there isn't consistency. If there's consistency within all of our policies that says that if this weather condition exists, we open, then, then we can educate the population that needs the services so that they can, we can put a weather app on their phones. Pretty much everybody has phones and they would get that notification if the, what, if the trigger's going to be met. But when we have differing triggers, then that, that's going to, I mean.
It all becomes subjective.
It does.
Really subjective.
And it, and you, and it opens you up for some concerns, I think.
I think it needs to be a county-wide thing, but the cities have to be in the same position as the county.
Yeah.
Because if we're not all the same, then one, one city could say we're having an emergency and the other's not. And then how do you?
So should the policy be the county, a county policy for triggering? Basically, because, because I don't want to get Carl mad at me because he wants to run his own shelter. I mean, and it sounds like he's a lot, you know, they pulled it off, right? And they're coming in and, and like when John says, when John says somebody's got to be in charge, well, we could be in charge as far as the trigger point. But I think that we don't want to be, I don't, I think it would be problematic for us to be telling, I mean, you got, you got people in here from Gold Beach, Brookings and Port Orford. They're all relative, they're essentially different species though, just in this room, right? Those people don't all, they all have different.
We should be able to get direct information from your emergency services manager or coordinator. I'm not sure what the title is now. That's, that, to me, that's what makes sense is the point person in the county is that person is who's.
So if we have.
conveying your policy and your, your information to nonprofits that are wanting to navigate that.
Okay. But, but, but you see what I mean? As far as, as far as like, as far as like the, the setup of the, I, I see where, I see where Carl's coming from and you acknowledge it as well. We want to be careful about, about dictating how it's done. We just want to say, we want to leave that up to whoever's doing it. Okay, I can, I can.
Yeah, so the emergency manager or the emergency manager position can communicate that message, especially related to trigger points. But when that happens, you know, Gold Beach has got to say, "Yeah, we're willing to do this." Or a nonprofit is going to say, "We're willing to do this." But it would seem like there'd have to be some parameters, like if you were going to have that, I, I guess I circle back to the liability issue, right? So, so if there's going to be a shelter in your city, then shouldn't there be some standard in place in terms of, I don't know, fire inspection or?
Yeah. We had to ask for.
Yeah.
When to come and take a look at what we were doing because we, I mean, that's where I come from. As I told you, I have a risk management background and I don't want to be, we don't want to put ourselves in that position of being.
So it might make sense that.
We asked for them to come and take a look at what we're doing and let us know if there's anything that would change. But that should be something that just happens. If we're standing up at shelter, fire is responsible for ensuring that we're not blocking any ingress egress. We've got fire extinguishers. We have the proper equipment available. So, I mean, that's typically, that's how that works, but.
But as far as like liability reasons, why, why is, I don't know how that would work because I know the city itself does not have a facility to open. So I don't know who's going to insure a facility, so that's kind of where I think you're bending around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If an organization wants to open it.
And get a sort of insurance for the property. That's what you do. Just call your insurance company and say, "Hey, we're going to be operating a shelter at this location. We need a sort of."
Which isn't that, isn't that in the Brookings policy? Isn't, isn't it incorporated in there to say something about must have.
Yeah.
Insurance, must have inspection, must have whatever. Is there something to that effect in there?
Yes.
So at some point in time, in Seekah Beach and Over Road, Brian and Carl pulled this off through Rotary? Did Rotary?
Rotary showed up.
Rotary.
Rotary showed up and set it up, taped off the floor for us. They were amazing. Helped us unload the truck, had everything all set up and then volunteered for shows. Who called? I call, I call my friends.
You would not an official Rotary project.
Gotcha.
If we had been.
And more people.
Rotary would have been short.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, when you talk about inspections, that space we had had been used.
It is used.
In the past, before we were there, by various organizations. And it wasn't until we had the fire department come in and do an inspection that the proper fire equipment was activated. Because we were there, there was a major improvement in life safety devices in that building. And that's, you know, that's just what happens, you know? Friends and family fly free. "Oh, you know, I know these guys. We don't have to inspect." Well, you know, we had the inspection. It was the second time, I think, they came in that they recognized it. Maybe, I forget whether it was the alarms or the fire extinguisher.
They were in within 24 hours installing smoke and carbon monoxide detectors in the room because there wasn't any. But it was resolved. It was resolved quickly.
Chances, and no one's going to let us operate without insurance. It's getting a certificate from you. It may cost you money, but we don't need a policy that says we need insurance. Whoever's going to let us there is going to require insurance. Or if they don't, they don't. That's their, not yours.
At, at the time that this was all happening in such a flurry without a whole lot of direction, um, we were relying on a community action agency that was quite hobbled and still is. And didn't really want to lean into the responsibility, but all of us here were like, oh, and we're not taking it. We don't have deep pockets like you do. We're not taking that responsibility. And so that was part of that wrangling also, was that who's going to really be financially responsible. The one thing I will bring out that was, I appreciate Officer Sarah. She and the sergeant came through to, to see what was going on and, you know, and talked with our volunteers and talked with me. And um, she brought up a really good point, which is, we have people that are trespassed from the fairgrounds. Who's legally respons, who can say that this person can now come in because Orca's on the lease? They're now controlling the building and the use of it. Who gets to see?
It happens to the fairgrounds.
How, how, and, and what, how we did it was we just said, look, if you've, if we've got people in the shelter that are trespassed from the fairgrounds, then they're directed, that they come directly to and from. They do not loiter, they can't stay. If they are, they're subject to trespass and pick, and being picked up. So that was kind, that, at the moment, that was how we handled that. But that's something to think about when you're writing your policies, that if you do have people that are trespassed from the property, how are you going to get around that? Because it will happen.
Well, the diff, the difference is, is now they are overseen by.
A different agency.
Party, yeah.
Yeah.
So Chris, you got a problem with?
I don't.
Okay.
I mean, we, our people trespass all the time because they set up shop and try to live. I wouldn't tell you who was what.
But in the, in the, in the, in the, in the time that we have an, an emergency, you know, a warming center, that's going to.
Whoever's taking the liability.
But it, they're. Have liability insurance for this?
I don't.
But it's, I, it's also, is the point is, it's not our, it's not the county's responsibility or purview to concern us also that. That's just between. Right.
And they rented the building, provided the insurance and manned it.
Yep, okay.
So I still am struggling with who is in charge when it gets really cold and.
Well, there's, I, I don't think there's, there's anybody specifically in, in charge except for the emergency manager will be able to say that if we have a policy regarding what, what we deem for county purposes would trigger the advisability of a, or the, the application of a, of a warming center, we'd have, we'd, we'd develop a policy kind of like this. And we would say, you know, certain degrees, we adopt at that point then, that then a warming center could be, could be adopted. And, and at that point then, some third party could come in and say, we want to do one, we want to, we want to put one in the, at the road department. You know, or, I mean, or, or, and then, but countywide, somebody at that point, because they called county emergency management and say, yeah, thirty-six degrees, that's what our policy is. And if, if Gold Beach doesn't have a policy, but countywide, it's this, this degree, you know, that's the triggering event, then, then the Gold Beach would be able to say, okay, cool, we're, we're cool with that. And then, and then whatever requirements they have, which would be, you know, the overview of the building and so forth. But most of that is outside of us.
Basically, the county would be responsible, responsible for the notification of the trigger, potential trigger of the event. Uh, but that's it. And as far as declaring an, uh, an emergency, whether it's a local or a state emergency, you know, one of the issues is whether we've exhausted all of our resources. And based on the numbers that I was getting back when that event was between Brookings and here, we weren't close to exhausting.
Emergency, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just want to say thank you. And by the time it's cold enough, both the mayor and the chief of police of Gold Beach will be members.
Well, we appreciate Rotary.
Michelle.
Hi. I was also a volunteer at the warming shelter. And I just want to say thank you to the fairgrounds and to Beth and to Carl. It was an amazing time. It went really well and we did have several people there. And um, there was absolutely no problem. It was amazing. I wish you commissioners, we were talking about, wish you guys would have come down and, and taken a look around at how it was set up, because it was remarkable. And um, I appreciate all of you being willing to step forward and, and help in this process, because it is a needed program that needs to be implemented into the, into the city. And um, and the county, if we can get the city and the county to work together on something that can trigger a warming shelter to open, that would be great. So I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you, because these people really needed it. And they were so grateful. And um, like Carl said, they would sit all night and talk at the tables and play cards and do puzzles. And it, it was a remarkable time to see um, these people actually getting together in a warm setting where they could communicate and not be sitting in a doorway somewhere in the city, huddled together, trying to stay warm. And um, that's what is, that's what I, I would like to see happen for our city, is to have somewhere to go during this time. And um, thank you, Beth. Thank you, Carl. Thank you to the fairgrounds. That's all I wanted to say.
It was unprecedented cold weather. It was something I haven't seen in a lot of years, so. Um, don't want to see it again, but if it happens, we'll be better prepared for the next event, right? That's baptism by fire or ice.
By snow.
Yeah, snow and ice and cold, so. Yeah.
So do you, the, do the two of you think we need, it would be beneficial to im, implement a, a policy that relates to triggering of any event? What do you think, Jay?
Yeah, I think we get a hold of Coos Bay and CHIP over there and see what their, their system looks like. And then maybe we can grab another one, too. Another coastal uh, county, community. Um, and see, and just do some comparisons on what that trigger looks like. And the goal, I mean, I, I'd hope the goal would be that the cities along agree with the policy that's being made. So, because like you clearly articulated, like, we have no authority to declare a shelter in the city of Gold Beach, which is what we were being asked to do. We're like, no, Gold Beach has to do that. And so, um, but if we have that trigger, it makes it real easy.
Right.
Trigger's been met, everybody agrees on the trigger. You know, then, then we know what steps to take.
Why couldn't it be the same policy?
That's why I was, I mean, it needs to be the buy-in from all three cities and the county as, as well. That way, everybody's on the same policy. No matter what community you're in, you know the trigger's the same.
Yeah, exactly. Agreed.
I think the addition that Carl would like to see is, and I can kind of understand it. If, if it's going to be a two or three night of, of deal, that have your own, your own spot.
Well, and each jurisdiction, each jurisdiction would have their own responsibilities for enforcement on that.
Okay.
That shelter, but the triggers itself would all be the same for each community.
And if you feel like you, depending on the, on, on the scenario, you might want a different venue, you know? So it just depends on what's available at that time and what's, what's, if, if you've got a whole bunch of people, maybe it is a school. I don't know.
Well, what, what we can do, what, what we can do is, so it looks like uh, Brookings has adopted the Coos Bay policy or something similar. I don't know if they've actually approved that yet or not. Um, but we can take the lead by um, establishing what, what our recommended guidelines are, then send that out to uh, the cities. And then if everybody can agree on it, then we can implement that.
Excuse me, we're drifting back, doing all the bells and whistles. All the requirements, what size space, but you agree to simply rest.
Right.
That's what we're talking about, Carl.
When you talk about adopting the policy, Coos Bay, the policy, that's more than.
No, we got, we got your message, Carl. We got it.
I hear, I hear.
So Carl, let me clar, let me clarify. When I say adopting the policy, what I'm referencing is to the trigger in the policy.
And only the trigger.
Right.
And when he says he's talking to Coos Bay and CHIP, that's the emergency management guy.
Yeah.
So, right.
Yeah, the county, Carl, I'll be really clear. The county has no desire to tell the city of Gold Beach how to run the city.
Or the Rotary Club.
Well, we have a meeting next week, so um, I'll bring this portion up to our council and mayor and see what their thoughts are.
Yeah.
Brett?
I've been here a while. I get to go next.
Okay, Connie, go.
I just want to say, I agree with a lot of not trying to define space and things like that, but staffing, enough staffing. Uh, I think there was half as much staffing that needed to be in place at the Brookings facility, uh, that was in place. I think we need to make sure that you also background check your volunteers. Because we had a situation with OHA not checking a volunteer, and that volunteer has been in our community. And we found out later some real problems there. So just as far as staffing, uh, be, be prepared, have people lined up and volunteers. I, they called me at the last minute and I just hadn't gotten over COVID, so thank God, because I went there and I had some natural immunity. But my point is this, if you don't have your staffing prior to, you're, you're talking about, yes, you're, when, when do you decide you're going to have this, but when you have this, have that staffing ready to go, to deploy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
Again, Brett, Brett Cecil from Port Orford. I did read through the two policies from city of Coos Bay and the city of Brookings, and it looks like there's a trigger written in there already, and it's based on temperature reported by the National Weather Service. Sounds pretty simple.
I, I'd just like to add Lauren Kessler.
You got a good, you got, yep. Up, up. This exercise, it's like judo class.
Lauren Kessler, Port Orford, uh, I'd just like to add to that. We, last year, we did have a warming center in one of the churches. We had insurance, we had all that. Volunteers worked out well. Uh, the only problem we had, and we learned our, our first lesson is, don't go, we can't go by temperature only in Port Orford. If most of these people are living in a tent, wind chill. So we, 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 we were sometimes were opening at, at like forty degrees because the wind chill was down in the thirties. So that, that was the only thing, wind chill needs to be part of your decision.
They call it Northern Curry County for a reason.
Yeah.
Blow a man off a mule. Thank you. Beth?
I'm a problem solver. Um, we have a CERT program in Curry. So to Connie's concerns about staffing and having people trained up and prepared, we'll have your emergency manager build out our CERT program and include Red Cross shelter training in that process. And we will have people in the community that are trained to Red Cross standards for running a shelter. But when we have an emergency, we're going to take volunteers that present themselves in that time.
Right.
Um, we don't have done necessarily the luxury of background checks um, in an emergency. It, it should be done, but it's not necessarily going to be able to happen in the timeframe that we need.
Anthony?
Well, and it's kind of off the subject. We're looking at just a trigger. We're not going to be staffing. We're not going to be in charge of any of that. We just are looking at the policy for the trigger itself.
Right.
And all that stuff, all that stuff would reasonably be handled under, if, if, if there's, you know, if, if, if an entity is leasing something to Carl, Carl's going to have an insurance policy.
Right.
And that's going to be covered. And we don't need to start bossing people around.
The only thing you may consider is the policing issues, additional whatever resources associated with that, but.
I'll get a criminal background check when all of you test.
Well, Carl, I've passed many and I've passed many.
I know you have.
And uh, I'm, I'm good with that any day.
Yeah.
You lose more volunteers because no one wants to go through a criminal background check. And they want them for things where you just see paper. My wife was going to reorganize a major charity here, which is something she did back in Massachusetts. Huge number of people. She'd never see a patient. She'd never see a child. She'd never see a human being. Oh, you have to have a criminal background. She said, no, thanks. We're not going to do it. There's no reason to have it.
Actually, there is a reason, Carl, but um, there, there is a reason, because there are predators that uh, that take advantage of emergency situations and other situations, and they, they victimize people. So there is a reason for it, but to Beth's point, when there is an emergency, uh, there are protocols to follow in an emergency. The Red Cross dictates what those protocols are and will follow those protocols.
So you're just going to do the trigger? No staffing?
Yeah.
No criminal background checks?
We're really good at getting off topic.
Yeah, we're going to do the trigger.
I need to go downtown and talk downstairs and talk about my neighbor who's using a chain, a gas-fired chainsaw this morning and this afternoon in the woods right behind my house.
That triggered something, I can tell.
Hopefully not.
All right. Trigger.
I think we've got directions, John.
We're on the safety.
We'll work out a policy and we'll circulate it.
Thank you.
Or review.
Anybody else like a few notes? Good.
Thanks, Anthony.
Yeah.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.